It doesn't work like that. We said I could.
Yeah.
I've talked to several people. I don't know if you see the guy. He knows fast enough. He's like, just call him. It's gonna help. Change that.
I used to be able to tell him. I don't have time to do that anymore. I used to give him a double.
He's still one.
I also did a slash or something.
Oh, he says something.
You have to wait quite long. You're fine as much as you want. How about a slap? There's a good reject. All we.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is now six o'clock and we called to order this special meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. As I said, it is a special meeting. We're here tonight to hear a, uh, an appeal to this board from a decision made by the Randolph County Planning and Zoning Board earlier. And, uh, we have, there's been an appeal filed to this board for our review and, and a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. So, we welcome each one of you here. Uh, we have several members of our planning and planning board here tonight. Our planning staff is here tonight. And, uh, we welcome you to the process and thank you for your service to the county and to the citizens here as you, uh, work on these cases and make decisions and, um, they get tougher by the day, by the week or month, but, uh, it's our job and we thank you for what you do to help speed up this process. I will remind you that we are on YouTube tonight only. Uh, Facebook is above my pay grade, but, uh, they have blocked us out, uh, based on the number of folks evidently that, that sign up for our meeting. So, uh, we're on YouTube and, um, we welcome those that, that are joining us from YouTube tonight as well. So, thank you. As I said, we have the request of a decision made by the Randolph County, uh, Planning Board. Uh, Tanya Cattle is here to present the case, the issue to this board, and we welcome you again. So, Tanya, it's all yours.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. We do have a PowerPoint prepared for you all tonight. So, there we are. We have it up on the screens. Uh, Randolph County Board of Commissioners will hold a duly published and notified legislative hearing on the request by Thomas Snyder in Ashboro and their request to appeal the decision of the Randolph County Planning Board to deny the rezoning requests of TJTR Properties, LLC in Ashboro to rezone 21.33 acres at 2863 NC Highway 134, Cedar Grove Township, tax ID 7657589746. This is in the secondary growth area and they're rezoning from residential agricultural district, residential restricted district, and light industrial conditional district to straight light industrial. It's desire TJTR Properties to rezone the property to allow any uses allowed by right in the light industrial district. This means there's no conditional use. This is all uses that are in the light industrial district would be available to them should this pass approval tonight. Next slide. You'll see here's the map of the property and the zonings around the property. Uh, the RA, of course, takes up majority of the property here, but these are the items around. You'll see on the north side of that is Cox Harley-Davidson and across the interstate there is the Country Club. Next slide. So, here again, you're gonna see the, um, highlighted part of the current light industrial piece of what section of the property is currently zoned for that conditional district.
But, Tanya, the, the entire area on the previous slide is, is included in the rezoning.
That's right. He's wanting to take the whole property.
It's not just what's in the blue here.
Right. Next slide. This kind of gives you an arrow picture of what's currently out there and access coming off of 134. And you can see portions of the property are still covered in trees and part of it has been cleared for the businesses currently there. Next slide. This shows you your growth areas. Um, you're right on top of partly secondary and partly primary growth areas. Here, he abuts actually primary growth area on the north side. Next slide. Uh, pictures of the area that's, this was posted and, um, taken pictures of while we're out in the field, uh, as well as done the advertisement for this hearing. I think that's the end of the slides. Is that right? Yes, ma'am. So, I can take any questions tonight. Like I said, this was heard at the September 12th Planning Board hearing. The board did vote, um, to disapprove the, the request, a unanimous vote.
And the request was for light industrial.
Straight zoning, yes, sir.
Straight, straight zoning. So, that would encompass many of, many issues that are permissible under lighting, light industrial zoning.
That's correct, sir. There's nearly sixty possibilities in that zoning district. And you'll have a list of those, of everything in the packet as well.
I think I counted fifty-seven of them.
Right.
Uh, second question. If it was zoned light industrial and then later it was changed, would that be downsizing? Would that be, because light industrial is the, just straight light industrial is the highest.
So, they request.
That's the highest zoning that, that it could have, right?
Well, so we have a heavy industrial as well, but it kind of just depends on what they would ask for in the future as to whether that'd be downsized.
Right. Questions? Have any questions?
Well, yeah.
All right.
One, that's my question. Uh, somewhere I missed it. I always do that, don't I? Uh, somewhere I've missed it. Uh, what was the, what was the vote, the Planning Board?
It was a unanimous vote for denial.
Unanimous, unanimous to deny?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I guess the question, I, I saw on the, one of the maps, it's, I, I'm assuming it's for, to allow signage along the interstate.
So, I think there's an exploratory there of allowing maybe multiple uses in that light industrial.
Right.
It could include signage, but it could include about any of these. So, he could put whichever one of these or a mixture of these on the property should he wish.
So, could there be a conditional district with two uses or?
So, tonight's is just, we're looking at a straight rezoning as the request.
Right.
Um, conditional district, we probably have to split zone that and do a conditional district on one piece for what they would like to do and on the bottom piece for whatever different they want to do, um, if they ask for that in the future.
Okay. I'm just curious as to that. You could have different pieces of property with different conditional use.
Well, like it's split zone now, so they could do something similar to that later.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm trying to remember if there's been another straight up rezoning since I've even been on the board. Has there been? And I mean.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't draw one from memory. I don't know, I mean, these gentlemen back here could, or the staff, but.
Megaside.
One, one does not come to mind.
The what?
Megaside was straight zoning.
Yeah. Straight rezoning.
This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing for comment from the public. And I will ask for those here, um, who wish to speak to come forward. We'll start, if you're, I know the petitioners who are requesting or file the appeal for the board, uh, so we'll open it for speakers first.
Mr. Chamber, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners, thanks for your time. I feel like I'm gonna be billed for overtime tonight, so just let me know if you need to send me a bill. We'll figure it out. So, I represent Tom Snyder and his request. I know you guys have most likely all ridden by the property. You know the property. I don't think the property's, it's the question at issue tonight. It's the request for the rezoning. Tanya just mentioned the uses by right and I assume, and I know I'm correct, to assume that you guys have looked through all those uses. And, you know, honestly, I don't see a few things in there that, that might give someone some heartburn, uh, but most of the things in here either, for instance, an automotive, uh, we used to call them junkyards when I was growing up. You guys can call them what you want to. But, uh, that requires a special use permit. Couldn't be done without that anyway. Uh, the, um, drive-in theaters, guys, I'm lobbying for a drive-in theater if y'all get one back, but I don't think that's realistic, but it is listed in the code of some of the uses. Body shop, uh, near and dear to my heart. My brother has one of the nicest ones in the county. And, uh, you notice it's right here in the heart of Ashboro behind the mall. Those things, when done right, aren't a negative. As a matter of fact, it's an essential part. Of course, he wouldn't think I wanted to say that. He doesn't need any, want any more competition, but they provide a service to the county as well. Um, you have, I handed out to you guys earlier, a letter from the most invested neighbor, Cox Harley-Davidson. They've got quite an investment there. And if, uh, if you've had an opportunity to read that letter, in essence, says that they're in a hundred percent approval of this request. They're Tom's neighbor. Uh, let's tell you a little bit about Tom, and this is not about people, but I still think it's important because we all know once it's approved, if it's approved, it's everything by right, and I get that. But Tom is the, was the founder of Snyder Stone. He sold it, uh, to the bogers, but, uh, in the heyday, he had fifty-two employees there. He was a vital part of commerce in this county and that operation is still vibrating going on yet today. Uh, he doesn't have any plans to necessarily to do that again, but his no competes over, so you never know what he might do. Uh, Tom's an entrepreneur. He does a number of things. Uh, if you'll notice, if you're written, when you wrote out there, I'm sure you saw, just did about ten acres of hay out there. David, that's near and dear to your heart. You were doing it recently. So, there's a lot of activity going on on this property already. His, his reason for doing this, and, and there's, it's many-pronged reasons. He didn't want to have to come back every time. He wanted to do something else. Fabrication, welding, machine shop. Uh, Tom does a lot of things. He's an amazing guy and, uh, he does a lot, uh, for commerce and he's, he's got about six or eight people working for him now, but depending on his next idea and his next plan, that can change in a hurry. Uh, to correct, uh, your question, we've had a couple of straight industrials approved by the Planning Board. I'm gonna be real careful when I say that. I know they're sitting behind me, so it might be the last one. But there are times when it's a reasonable request, and we feel like this is a reasonable request. I read through every one of these uses and I could not find one that didn't require a special use permit. I think, uh, there was one about, uh, carnivals. Uh, how the last carnival in Ashboro was either at the mall or on property the county owns now at Northgate. I'm pretty sure you're not gonna let them put a carnival up there again. Uh, those are weekend events that they were ever to occur and, you know, I've talked to some of you guys prior to this meeting and, you know, ever's a long time. I get that. But, but running through these uses, and I looked at them real closely, uh, I didn't see one that I thought was out of line. And if it were, I don't believe the county would have had that in the, in the code and in the district if it was out of line. I don't think any of them are out of line. The thing that came up at the Planning Board, and we'll just get to the biggest elephant in the room, it, it went real quick, real, real quick to billboards, frankly. And, uh, we spent the majority of the evening talking about billboards. And, uh, you know, we've, I've had a lot of conversation with folks and, uh, I think you know my position on billboards. I don't believe in south of the border. That's ridiculous. See them whenever thirty feet. Hal, if I'm not mistaken, the state code's five hundred feet separation. I think the county's code's one thousand feet. Is that correct? So, we're at double the state standard on separation of billboards. And there's all kinds of billboards. There's electronic boards which, uh, Hal, you may remember about fifteen, sixteen years ago, Phil Kemp, Larry McKenzie, myself and you met. We had a long conversation about billboards. I think you called for the meeting. You were fielded. And one of the advantages, you can put, uh, weather issues on the boards. You can put amber alerts, silver alerts. If the, uh, if the owner agrees to that, and I don't think any owner would disagree with that, there's a lot of traffic. This seventy-three, seventy-four has turned into a real interstate. We called it two-twenty bypass for years. It's a whole lot more than two-twenty bypass now. Lot of it due to your hard work, Darrell, yours and, um, Townbridge Bakers and others. I mean, this is gonna go from what Detroit to Savannah before it's over with. There's a lot of traffic. One of the, one of the uses in here that, that might have gave people some, some, um, heartburn was a trucking terminal. It might give you that, but, you know, right down the road on the interstate, I think we're fixing to do a truck stop. And anybody that's driven one-thirty-four to Troy, I don't think that anybody can expand or exceed the log trucks I run into on a regular basis when I take that trip. That, that corridor's already loaded with trucks. Uh, I don't see that happening. Uh, you know, one of the things that people in truck stops and those kind of things do, they look at logistics. How do you get on and off without making too many turns? This wouldn't be ideal for that. You, you can see it. You know, there's a lot of frontage roads and a lot of interstates that you, you see and look at, but you gotta have a compass to get there. If, and you guys know what I mean when I say that. It's just not clear how do you get there. This is a little bit that way. Uh, I will take you back to the Harley-Davidson letter, and I'm sorry Stephen couldn't be here. But if you're a neighbor, you have more to lose or gain in any decision that this board or any board might make. And if a neighbor is a hundred percent in favor of, then I think that carries a lot of weight and I think you guys would probably agree with that, too. Uh, I've talked to several of you guys. Uh, some of you were at the, uh, retreat, the chamber retreat this weekend. I don't ever want to ask or represent a client who's asking for something that's unreasonable. It's never my intent. But I will say that, uh, many times you're earmarked to the code. And, and my client did not draw this code. He's asked for the code. He's asked for this condition or, or this zoning condition. So, I'm open for any questions. Uh, I know there are a few things here that gave few of you heartburn, but, uh, again, I didn't find anything that didn't require a special use permit. Uh, one thing I did want to mention, one of the things that required a special use permit was a cell phone tower. Mr. Snyder had an opportunity recently to do just that, and he talked with me and some others, and the problem with that is that it, you have to have a fall radius for the entire tower. There can't be any structures or anything that can inhibit its fall. So, he decided that that would impair the use of the property and he wants to utilize his property and do it in the right way. He's done a good job. He'll continue to do a good job. And I told him, and, and you guys are a hundred percent right, this property would be here when we're all dead and gone. And the zoning will either be in place or it won't. But I think he's made a reasonable request and, um, as far as his uses, it's multiple. And that's why he's here. He didn't want to be here every month or every other month or every six months, asking for a, to answer your question, David, to stack on another condition to the use that he'd already asked for. I'm here available for questions. I'd like to leave it open after you debate if, uh, I don't think there's anyone here in opposition. There might be, unless it's the Planning Board, they're sitting behind me.
I have to say this, H.O., I get complaints. As a matter of fact, I got a call wanting us to pass an ordinance to outlaw the air brakes on the trucks with the chief coming in down at Seagrove because it made so much noise in, at night.
Did you refer them to DOT?
Stop, stop them from using air brakes.
We had one down there a few months ago when I represented the client. He was doing a, a product that crushed up concrete and it was just a nine-to-five operation. And, uh, you guys heard that, as a matter of fact, and, uh, he, he provides a good service and the neighbors just didn't want it because they didn't want it. But, you know, the good news here, and this thing's been advertised not once, but twice, not once, but twice now, and I haven't seen anybody in opposition yet. No one in opposition. And I think this is a large enough community with enough people in it, with enough investment in it, that if there was a reason to turn it down, you would've heard a peep out of someone. Now, there may be something I'm not aware of in opposition. If there is, I'm not aware of it. They may be behind me now.
Comments, Commissioners, questions?
The ones I spoke to, it, it dealt with just the enormity of all these things that, that are permitted here. And there are some that, that, um, I don't think the community would want if that was a specific request. And I, I doubt that very many know what all's included on, on this list, do you?
If you got time, I'll read them all. I got them with me.
Yeah, right.
Really, I'll review them this afternoon again and most of the, well, for instance, one was it can be agricultural unless it's a swine farm. That requires a special use permit. If it's, if it's gonna be an auto salvage lot, it has to be over three acres, and this certainly is over three acres, but it requires a special use permit. That means those folks are gonna be back in front of you again, so you still get to have oversight and control. I didn't see one thing in there, honestly. You know, auto body shop, I, you know, they're, they're around scattered throughout the county. Some were grandfathered, some have been built since zoning was in place. There's a number of them in, probably more in the city than there is in the county. And, um, I don't think anybody gets any problems from those. I mean, it's necessary. Auto garage, uh, I think one of them said it could be a convenience store or a fuel service station, I think's the way it's stated. And I can point you to Cliff's Curve Market, which is on two-twenty business. Shoot, that's a hotspot for the community. That's where people gather and meet and compare notes. It's, uh, always got a crowd there. It's never a negative, as I know of. Never heard of a negative there. The negative we got from the, uh, Planning Board was that frankly, it was all about billboards. It, it was about billboards. Uh, one of the questions was, can we approve this? Tanya was asked, could we approve it if we leave billboards out? And her answer was no, because if you're asking for all of it, you're asking for all of it. And if you're asking for part of it, you're asking for part of it. But you could, we can leave that out and frankly, I, I, and I'm hesitant to say this, but I'm going to because I think he won't, would do this in the future if allowed, but Mr. Snyder said if, if they had approved that, I would've been fine, just say, okay, let me do it and leave billboards out. But that wasn't the option. I know we can come back. But you guys are busy, the Planning Board's busy. It's just no point in keep, my grandfather used to say chewing your could over and over. There's just no point in continuing to chew these things over and over. Uh, there have been a couple, as I said, zoned straight up commercial in the county. I think you're gonna get more and more of those requests, Darrell. Uh, as, as there are more industry people, there're gonna be people coming in here from all over this country, and they're gonna wanna know which zoning classification they need to ask for to do their use. And I don't think they want to hear, well, accept this, that, or that.
Speaking personally, I, I would've been more supportive of a request for billboards than I would be for this.
Well, I hope we don't have to go chew.
I was in the sign business.
I get it. I hope we don't have to chew our could over again on this, but.
I, I think that's something the county's gotta look at.
Well, I think everybody's been to South Carolina, to Myrtle Beach and saw that hideous, uh, south of the border mess and, and you guys have got, got all kinds of rules and regulations that would prevent that if anybody was dumb enough to try it, I guess would be the way to say it. But I will say this, I, I think I spoke to you once, Darrell. If you're coming in from West Sixty-four, if you're looking straight at Close Warehouse, be careful, you'll be on the loop because you gotta exit to come into town. There just isn't enough directional, there's not enough zoo directionals.
Right.
I know there's that corridor to the zoos, no billboards. I think it's a safety feature to let someone know, take exit twenty-two, forty-eight, sixty-eight. It just helps you get in the right lane. It helps you know when you're gonna exit. We don't have enough of that. Uh, you know, someone said at our last meeting, well, that's what we, held up a cell phone like that. And I said, I don't recommend that at seventy-five miles an hour, but maybe it works, maybe it works, but not very safely. Signs are important, but that's not the only request here. I get that. But I do believe that, um, that when these, when this classification was drawn, it was drawn with a lot of foresight. I don't think it was drawn saying, well, guys, we're gonna draw it, but every cotton picking use will have to be conditional use. If that's the case, then we don't need any zoning codes. Let's just do conditional use for every request. And think about that. Think about that statement. If you're not gonna follow the classification, then let's just do conditional zoning for every request, which is not what I recommend. I'm here if you need me. I'd like to leave it open if you got some other questions before you, before you decide to vote.
One, one thing of clarification, no, there were nobody, there was nobody, uh, that spoke against this request. No.
There's no opposition at the Planning Board I can't speak about tonight. They still have, it's still open for opposition tonight.
I don't think there was a single speaker, was there?
Yeah, just me, ju- just, just myself. And, and, and listen, I want to say this, the planning, planning's a hard job. Hal, I don't know how you did it for thirty years. It's a hard job and everybody doesn't always get to hear what they want to hear. But you want to make good, clear requests. You want to have, you want to, you want to think that you're doing the right thing when you do zoning. It's one of the hardest jobs you guys have. I commend you for breaking it out of your regular meetings. Sometimes it gets real emotional. It gets adversarial. But again, I'm gonna take you back to the classification. The classification's clear. It allows what it allows. It has special use permits required when they're necessary. And, and if the code isn't right, then the code should be amended or changed. If there's something in a code that's not satisfactory, I mentioned to someone, uh, when the city did, uh, when we did Fuentes, the, uh, the Kenny Dallas Center. Those guys came to me and I did that project, and they go lots of times into industrial areas. They say they're used, those folks will find them. And they'll go into industrial areas and, uh, and build those things. And they said, uh, this, I went to the city and, and, you know, they, they wanted to be open to it. We found a spot, but they don't allow that. They don't allow that in an industrial area. So, we had to find the classification that it allowed and it was B-two in the, in the city. But they said that was amazing because at some places we go, it's no problem going in industrial area. And I told them, well, it's unique from location to location. Each area, each municipality, each government board has to decide their own zoning and you do it with, uh, you, you don't do it haphazardly. You do it with a lot of thought and, and it should be with a lot of thought. You know, and then there are things that become, well, let me give you an example. You guys have one a while back. I think it was pulled down about, uh, mining for, uh, the computers that mine the crypto stuff. And who would've thought ten years ago, we'd even need a classification for something like that? So, what did the school superintendent tell us at, uh, at the retreat? Don't drift. It's easy to get your eye off the ball and see that, because things do change. And as things change, changes need to be made. But there's some classifications, uh, in here. Drive-in theater. I don't think there's a reasonable person in this room that thinks anybody will ever open a drive-in theater again. I'm pretty sure they don't. So, that probably needs to be taken out. I, I don't know. But again, most of the things I saw in there that would have any kind of, uh, heartburn to anyone also require a special use permit. And I understand why, and they should, and they should. They should.
Again, the clef, I'm looking at the, uh, I'm looking at the map here. Oh, yeah. Kenny is too. Uh, so it's not the whole parcel. It's just.
And we're asking for the entire parcel, the, the entire, isn't that right?
It is the whole parcel.
It's the entire parcel.
That's, that's why I'm asking the blue part.
So, so look at the parcel if you, if you look.
The that part, yeah.
That's what's current. Go back to, yeah.
That's the current zoning.
There's the request. The whole parcel.
Well, okay, there's the request. Okay, the whole parcel. Not, not that part, but the whole parcel.
Yeah, the current was in the, was in the blue.
There's three different.
I'll, I'll defer to.
Yeah, it, it was rezoned in twenty-sixteen and rezoned last, last time in twenty-twenty-one, March twenty-one.
And there was a contiguous piece that Mr. Snyder used to own that I came before this board and you were, or this, uh, the, the Commissioners and you guys were kind enough to approve a parts distribution center. a parts distribution center. That never came to fruition. It was later sold and someone used it for a residential need. And think about this for just a minute. I think you might, one might say, well, why in the world would Harley-Davidson be in favor of this? They're the next-door neighbor and there's uses that might be nefarious or not in keeping. So we had this conversation, Darrell, at the retreat as well. I think you spoke to the crowd and said Toyota's requesting a mile radius around the mega site because they don't want to make noise and have problems later with neighbors and people that are raising cane, getting the calls about the air brakes, and all this kind of stuff that you're talking about. So I can certainly see why Harley-Davidson would be fine. Those things are loud. And a neighbor that's not going to complain is an important neighbor. And so most of the uses that are involved in this request, they don't have a problem with. I will say, they're the most invested. They're the most invested there, other than Mr. Snyder himself. And they're 100% in favor of it. So I think that goes a long way. You know, most of the time, we've got people sending in letters and dissertations about how they don't want it, and about all kinds of crazy reasons about why they don't. So it's refreshing to me to see a neighbor who's willing to stand up and say, I think it's in good, good keeping, in good keeping, this request.
All right. You, just to clarify, you didn't have the Cox letter at the previous hearing?
They were not there. They had, I think they knew about it, but they didn't see a reason to come. And this time, I think, I think Mr. Snyder approached them and said, we're going to appeal it because we were turned down. And they said, well, let us send something speaking in our, our consideration is that it should be approved. You don't get that very often. You guys are usually got a room full behind me that are raising cane about it. You don't see that today. And I think that speaks volumes. I think it speaks volumes.
So in 2016, it was a conditional district permit. But the use conditions, as I'm looking at them here, were, you know, the purpose it's being used for, construct buildings for sale and manufacture of portable accessory buildings as per site plan. And the condition I see is billboard advertising signs prohibited. They are on the plan that apparently was submitted. If I'm reading this right, it has billboard location, but then it has, you know, that's been highlighted in yellow, not allowed. And so then in 2021, the request was for more buildings, correct?
In 2021, unless I'm mistaken, it was a piece of property Mr. Snyder owned, was selling subject to get it being zoned conditional use for two buildings for parts distribution, unless I'm mistaken. I think I'm right.
Right.
And that was approved. And it was just never built. Some things happened in that family. The mother died. There's some things that happened. And they went a different direction with the, they did buy the property. They did purchase the property. I resold it for them later. And it was sold to someone who put a residential property there, I think. And as you notice, they're not here tonight in opposition.
Right. And per any discussion about billboards, none are showing on that plan that was submitted in 2021.
There was not. And the piece that that was zoned was separated from this property and was sold off. So there was certainly no discussion about billboards at that point. And frankly, you know, I was glad that, since there seemed to be so much emotion involved about billboards, unless the zoning board had brought up billboards, I didn't have a position to bring that up on a state, on a straight request. I'm really glad it was, because there seems to be a lot of oxygen around billboards, a whole lot of oxygen. And the last thing anybody wants to do is pull a fast one or slip one under the radar. So it was discussed and discussed at length. But I know you guys may or may not have talked to the individual planning board members, but the scope of the unanimous denial, in my mind, I could be wrong, was 100% about billboards. 100%.
100%.
Was the reason they denied it. In my, in my mind. I could be wrong, but that's, that's my opinion.
Well, it does open that door. I mean, if I look at that whole list of different uses, I'm like you, I don't see many uses that in a corridor like that would be objectionable. I mean, you know, maybe the junkyard.
With special use permit.
Carnivals. And then there are three for, I'm trying to find the list, but there were three for signs. And if we straight up rezone, then we have no control over signage, correct?
I don't think that's right. And Hal would have to speak on that. First of all, DOT has to, has to grant some permits. You guys have some things in place, such as thousand feet separation.
We have requirements.
And you have a building, you have to get a building permit. There are a number of things you have to do.
They would be permitted, along with all these other things.
I think that the bigger thing, if the, if state DOT sees that in the zoning covenants of a property, if they say, see anything that either prohibits or disallows billboards, you can't get a DOT permit. If either of those things occur, if it's either not included in the covenant, or if it's restricted, they won't, they won't issue. And they shouldn't. That would be going over the top of the wishes of the local government. So they do not do that. So I don't know. And I haven't looked at all of them. Hal, you can tell me, is there, is it H, the two industrial pieces that allow billboards? Both the two industrial or just light industrial?
I think it's both industrial districts.
Both, both industrial. Which generally, if you look at industrial by and large, it's not sitting on top of dense residential as a rule. Typically, it's not.
So I guess just to simplify this a little bit, and some, you can halfway answer this and defer, but I don't want to take up your time.
No, I got all night. I'm paying overtime now.
So I mean, simplify a little bit. I mean, I'm looking at that map, that one.
Mm-hmm.
That Maxton was just talking about. And so this lot, the whole, the entirety of it.
Twenty some acres.
Three different classifications. RAR, light industrial, right? And the majority of it is already light industrial.
Conditional use.
Conditional. There was a site plan submitted with it.
But it had to be by site plan with specific approval. You can't just do anything you want to. And you can anyway, because the classification has its own conditions. There's just certain things you can do in any classification. Any classification.
But I mean, really, I'm just saying, from 20,000 feet, you're just asking to clear the whole thing up to light industrial.
That's right. Make it consistent.
I just don't see it as a huge step. Now, I realize it's under conditional right now, but, you know.
We agree. We and the requestor agree with that comment 100%. It's not a huge step to go ahead and let him have the property completed in a classification that he didn't write, that you guys wrote and adopted. And he will follow the rules of that classification 100%.
You know, I get all that. And I get that a lot of growth is coming, but I'm not sure people realize the doors that are opened with this decision. So maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like it may open the door to increased straight-up rezoning requests, where we, you know, give up a lot of, a lot of control. And per that billboard issue, we've just spent all this time revising the, you know, the Northeast Growth Management Plan. And if there's anything we heard loud and clear from citizens, it is that one of the things that they value is kind of the rural character of the land. And if we straight up rezone this, then, I mean, you know, you could have, you know, you could have a carnival sitting down there, or you could have digital billboards sitting there. And then Cox's is adjacent to it. So they could come back and say, well, you know, this is what you did there. So this is what you should do for us. And they would be correct. I mean...
Sounds like you raised three boys to me. Sounds like you raised three boys.
And then, yes, they will tell you. I very much was the one who was, who was, yeah, making them enforce, enforcing the rules. But I mean, I think about fairness, and I think about if we open this door, then what's coming with other requests and other businesses? And if I'm off base thinking about it that way, then somebody please, you know, please tell me that. But, so I just think we need to think very carefully. It's not a decision that we can take lightly. I think we just need to really think carefully about what direction do we go with this, you know, with this straight-up rezoning? It's not that I don't think that that's an appropriate corridor for light industrial, but I do think having the conditional in place gives us a little bit more, you know, in the way of advocacy for other citizens as, as well as landowners. I mean, yes, I want landowners to be able to make money and use their property, but I get lots of, I mean, you know, Tanya will tell you right now that I've got a couple of people, or not people, but communities on issues with, you know, what's going on in their community. And another one was brought to my attention earlier today. And it's because I'm out in the county. You know, Commissioner Kidd probably doesn't get that much of that, because his district is the city. But, and I don't know about the other commissioners here, but I get that because that, you know, I'm, mine's very rural. So that is, you know, that's the hesitancy that I have, in a nutshell.
I think the one thing you might want to consider here, and I get what you're saying, but I don't disagree. First of all, you have to have a DOT permit as well. They don't just let you put them anywhere. And so I don't think you're going to find these just anywhere and everywhere. If you think about Randolph County, and we all drive these roads all the time, you see a few to the east toward Ramsore. You see a few that way. You see a few, 220 Business, Ashboro has a few. Biggest one sits there, First National Bank did it years ago. You know, that was a layup beside a server pizza. There's a few scattered, but I have kind of a longstanding wager that nobody will take me up on. You can go to any county that touches Randolph. And if I can't find more signs pointing with direction toward the North Carolina Zoo, than I can in North Car, than I can in Randolph County, I'll buy lunch. You can go to Greensboro. You can go there. It points, everybody points to the zoo. You're coming up that interstate. This is an ideal spot from southern traffic to know exactly where to exit to go to the zoo. I suspect they'll want to be on it if he builds it. He hasn't said he's going to build it. Yes, he made a request in 2016. Listen, I can tell you, these things are expensive. And Tom's pretty inventive. He'll do what he chooses to do. But you have to take it in as a possible factor. I get it. But here's what I would ask you, Hope. If not on an interstate, then where? If not on an interstate, then where?
That's the place.
If we want to look like 85, 40.
Well, I will say...
And maybe we do. I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking.
We're spending how much money to run water and sewer down that corridor? And if we don't want the development, then why are we spending the money to get water and sewer down there? I mean, I live within sight of a four-lane highway.
That's a good question.
And I don't like it, but that's where the growth is going to be, whether I like it or not. But I don't think, I mean, I do have an issue of going from, from the conditional zoning to unconditional. I, you know, once you do it, then it's hard, hard to go back. But then again, you know, if, there's a couple of municipalities, well, one certain municipality says they want the growth, they want the growth, they want the growth. But then, when it comes time to rezone something, I'll know we don't want that. So, I mean, are we, are we going to be business-friendly and have these type of rezonings? Or are we going to say, well, we really want the growth, but we, but we really don't want it, because we're not going to approve anything?
Right.
So, yeah, billboards, I don't think it's going to be, you know, by the interstates is the place to have them. I don't necessarily want them every 50 feet, but I think there's a place for them. I was going back from Myrtle Beach over the weekend. There's a new set of billboards, other than Pedro, down at South of Board, Sparky's. I liked, I thought, I didn't know where Sparky's was. That's a new one. And that was every, within every mile for about 15 miles.
You're going to have a Buckets coming, and they're going to have billboards.
Cleanest restaurants in the world, right? Cleanest restaurants in the...
As far as to the next one.
But I mean, I have an issue when somebody wants to do something with their property, and there's no opposition to it.
And the most invested neighbor is in favor of it.
Well, and I was concerned about what Cox's, what they were, what their position was. But in riding through the area, I, you know, there's not a lot of residential back away from it. But, you know, it's, I don't necessarily like going from conditional, unconditional, but that's what, if there's no opposition, I have a hard time, you know, going along with, with or without, with or without the billboards. And, you know, I don't see anything particularly in the list that would be incompatible with that area. I mean, you know, I...
I hope you guys believe this about me. I think some people want you to pave every piece of grass in the county and cut down every tree. I hope you guys don't think I'm that guy, because I'm not. And I don't, I don't, when I show up for a request, I got to believe in it when I show up for it. And I get plenty of opportunities. I don't have this property listed, so let me just say that upfront. He asked me to do it, and I've done some other business with him. And I thought I would be kind enough to help him do it. So if you know anything about me, I wouldn't let my children win at checkers growing up. I fight it to, I fight it hard. But I try to do it fairly, honestly. I have the best interest of Randolph County in heart. And I don't, as I, as I said to Darrell, I said to John Ogden, zero on the interstate for billboards is not the magic number. And I know we're not talking about just billboards.
Well, I mean, I see myself as an agricultural advocate, and, you know, but if you don't put this type of economic belt in corridors, then you're going to lose that farmland.
Yep.
So you have to protect that farmland. And this is, you know, it's going to come. So, you know.
He just bailed, he just bailed, he just bailed 10 acres of hay, so give him credit. He just bailed 10 acres of hay out there, so give him credit.
I saw that.
If you, any other questions, I'll be glad to step back up during your comments.
Good. I don't have a question, HR.
You don't have a question?
At all. Looking through all the information here, you know, the, I'm looking at the technical review committee recommended approval.
I rest my case.
Okay. They saw something they thought was okay. I realize the board recommended turning it down and nonapproval. I realize that. But I'm like, okay, based on what did the technical review committee see? That they thought it was okay. But what changed the mind of the board? And I'm, I'm not sure I know that.
We're not supposed to even read their minutes.
Maxton? I told you why, in my mind. My opinion was, it was 100% billboards. And I get it. That just, it just didn't hit well. And I honor their, their thoughts on it. They're great guys. They've been very kind to me. They're attentive. They do their homework. They look at everything and look for reasons to, to make the right decision. I'll say that here. I'll say it anywhere. They're a bunch of good people that don't get compensated an awful lot to serve and give their time. But, you know, the good thing about America, and some people might not have believed this, but I do, we have the right to agree to disagree. We don't always believe the same thing. And this was just one that we had a little bit difference of opinion on. But they, I hope they'll always tell you, I take it in stride. It's never personal. It's always about putting your best foot forward, and hopefully you can prevail. Do I prevail 100%? No. Do I try hard 100%? You betcha.
Well, I'd say mine is not, I would, if it was all about billboards, I'm for it. I mean, within reason and certainly within some guidelines that we have. But I, I think that's coming. I think it's a necessity. I worked in the sign company, and I fought regulations from Washington DC to Atlanta, Georgia. And I put 25 Texaco signs around the interstate in Atlanta, Georgia, years ago, electronic billboards.
Yeah, they had them before anybody else did, I think.
Yeah. So, and it's come. We've got two, we already got 85. We've got two interstate highways right through the middle of Ashboro right now. And the traffic grows by the day. So I think that has to be looked at.
Yeah. What did they, what was the statistics at our retreat? Duke Energy Environmentalists, I believe, said that Randolph County will grow in population in the next 10 years by 100,000?
About 100,000.
100,000, yes. That's a, we're going to, some of this growth is going to be painful, but, but most of it's going to be necessary. A guy once told me and said that the research triangle took 50 years to develop. He said, what's going to happen in the triad is going to happen in five.
But my issue is just doing away with any, any opportunity to, to address the issues here and... issues here, and somebody comes next time with another, another class, and they say, well, just take away all, all of it, just like you did on this one, and just opening it up and to everything that's on this list.
Here's what I would say to that. If there's some things in here that give you heartburn, then tweak it, change it, redraft your classification. And I think it's easier for you guys, frankly, instead of going through the cumbersome and labor conditional and the whining and the this and that, is to say, it's a good code, if you can do the things allowed in this code, these are, these are the sanctions, because that's what a classification is, it's a sanction on a piece of property. These are the sanctions that exist on this piece of property, and if they want to get outside of that, then they can ask for conditional use. Or heaven forbid, a variance. And we all know those are, they've loosened those up, I've done a couple of variances, I don't like variances. I think it's a lot easier to, to have a classification that's, that's...
I will repeat what I said to you earlier, or say it publicly, if you change your request from just nothing to a specific, then I don't see any, any reason why you wouldn't go forward with it. And you can do that next week, you can make that...
And, and I will say this to this board, governing body.
There's no waiting a year to do that.
I will say this to this governing body. If, if, if that's the requirement, then I think we probably would do that. But it would be so much simpler to do it now, live with the classification you have. If you don't like the classification, then tweak it, change it, and we can go on about business. But I know there are other options. It wouldn't, there's no year set down to come back, I get that.
I told my, Mr. Morgan and, and by Tanya, that it would have to go back through the planning board.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. Well, we're gonna certainly understand whatever this board's decision is, we will. I just hope you'll look at the classification and see there's very little in there that, that we think's a problem. And for, for Mr. Snyder or any future owner, and I'll leave you with that. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak tonight on this issue? Anyone at all? Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing and come back to the board for questions and direction for one problem.
Just, Ms. Chairman, I, I, I do want to, because I do have a, I, I want to tell the board a little bit about the history of conditional zoning and where it came from, and what we're trying to accomplish with conditional zoning. It's, when the county put in countywide zoning in 1987, we had what's called general-use zoning districts all over the county. There wasn't any conditional-use districts. And as the rezonings kept coming before the planning board and the county commissioners, every request, when the na- and this was all new back then, they wanted to know what was going on in the property. This might not be a big issue to them if they knew what was going on in the property. And the county didn't really have any way of specifically addressing what was going on the property. So in 1989, Randolph County, we, we were one of the first counties in North Carolina. There was two or three before us that adopted conditional-use districts, conditional-use districts. And at that time, it was a new concept in zoning, but what it, it did is it gave the planning board, the elected officials, the opportunity to have zoning districts where you could make decisions specifically what was being requested by that property owner. And a- as time has gone on, the conditional-use districts now has been clarified by the state to be called conditional districts, conditional districts. In Randolph County, since 1989, I, I would hazard to guess over 90%, if not greater, of our rezoning requests have been conditional districts. Because a county is different than a municipality. When you come into a city where there's Ashboro, Archdale, Trinity, Ramseur, you can pretty much tell where the industrial areas are, and the commercial areas are, and the residential areas are. So general-use zoning is probably more compatible for a city than it is a county with 800 square miles of, of land. And you look at this map, and, and you see all these different land uses. It's not all industrial. There's, there's undeveloped land, there's residential, Harley-Davidson's a, a nice highway commercial. And, and, and the zoning that was done back in 2015 was a conditional zoning, low impact, had no impact on the community, was allowed to expand in 2021, because it was specifically addressing that activity on that land. And we, the county has used that for many, many years successfully, and I've always felt, I felt in 1989, when we were one of the first, and now it's a common occurrence among counties, that that is more appropriate for a county than a municipality. And I think the, I'm not speaking for the planning board, but there's, there's several here. But the, I think what the planning board's concern was whether it went, whether the discussion went for billboards, or whether it went for junkyards or whatever, it was they did not know what was going on in that property. They did not see a site plan or some idea of what was going on in that property. And I, I think this is a good, as a, as your manager and former planning director, I think it's a good example of the, the, the issues that a planning board and planning staff and commissioners have to deal with when making large zoning decisions like this. And that's when conditional zoning can be a real effective planning tool. And I, and I don't, even though the discussion went on billboards, that's just one of many other things that could go on this property. And we have seen situations over the years where a property owner may come with conditional zoning, and then as time goes on, that changes, evolves over time. For what once was compatible to the community, no longer is it compatible to, to the community, and it changes. So conditional zoning has been a real asset to this county, a real tool, and we've used it since 1989 to address what those citizens out in the county, when they come to these hearings, we used to, and it's a little different now than what it used to be. Used to be, we'd have 100 people here, twice, twice a week at a planning board and a commissioner's meeting, and handle five or six zonings a night. And their concerns were the same, they wanted to know what was going on in that property, where it was gonna be located, and would they be held to these standards. So that's where conditional-use zoning came from. It's not something that's just about billboards. And so that's the history of that, going back to 1989.
That's good.
That's certainly helpful. The, I, I don't want to drag this out, I would, everything that Commissioner Allen said, I agree with. And I think, you know, looking at the conditional versus the straight rezoning, you know, and I've pored over this for, and kind of worried about, you know, looking at this, and is this a good idea or not, whatever. Been a lot of considering this, and, you know, we've talked about it a lot. The, but when I look, like you said, Commissioner Allen, when I look at all those uses, where it is on an interstate highway, you know, and is, is the community concerned about what's going there? Clearly, the community is not concerned about what's going there. Because nobody from the community's talked to any of us, as far as I know, at all about this issue whatsoever. Nobody. And the closest neighbor, which I agree is the largest stakeholder, is in favor of it. And from where it is in this, what I would call an industrial interstate corridor, if this piece of land was across from Eastern Randolph High School out in the county, yeah, then I want to know what's going there, and what's gonna happen, and what's going on. I want to know where the buffers are, I want to know everything about it, I want to know what the building looks like, everything. But it's not. It's on an industrial corridor that's on an interstate highway. I can't think of a more appropriate place for this zoning. But, you know, but I mean, I'm agreeing on what you said, it just, you know, but I've been seeing Commissioner McDowell's district, so I don't know.
Well, and keep in mind, it's also on 134.
You know?
Yeah.
And we've kind of alluded to that, relatively industrial highway, but anyway. But I mean, if you're not gonna look at this for developable property on our interstates, then I think you kind of do get in that conundrum, what you're talking about, Commissioner Allen, is, you know, we want some growth, we want to get a handle on this, and Randolph County's gonna change a little bit, and everybody not, but where would it be? I mean, I wouldn't want it on Providence Church Road, but it's an interstate and a North Carolina highway. I mean, you know, I don't, it's not a dirt road, Detroit. It's, it's not a neighborhood, it's not the entrance to River Run, you know, it's, so, anyway.
Well, we beat this one pretty good. And from a person that, a person who, in 1989, joined the planning, the planning board, and spent 18 years on the planning board, and being there, the one thing I, I hesitate to do is to be in adverse to what the planning board did, or their, their, their recommendation, or their decision. I still go back to, the Technical Review Committee said, they recommended to the commissioners, right here, that it be approved.
Right.
And I, I just, you know, I, I, those guys and gals that are on that board do a great job. It is not a fun place to be, month in and month out, at all. And I, I understand, I understand fully why they made that, that decision. However, we've got nobody out there opposing it, that I know of, I think that statement's been made. We've got the next-door neighbor saying, I'll write you a letter supporting it. So I, I think, I think that I would make the motion that we approve this decision. Okay? I gotta read it. I keep forgetting that I have to do that. I make the motion to approve the rezoning request, to rezone this specified parcel on the rezoning application and the map amended ordinance, a met, map amendment ordinance to the requested zoning district based on the determination of consistency and findings of reasonableness and public interest statements that are included in the Board of Commissioners' agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, and that the request is also consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
Right. We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll, I'll second. I'll second the motion to approve this rezoning request, to rezone the specified parcels on the rezoning application and the map amendment ordinance to the requested zoning district based upon the determination of consistency and findings of realism and public interest statements that are included in the Board of Commissioners' agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation, as, as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, and that the request is also consistent with Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Further discussion on the board, from the board. Any other comments or discussion?
I, I will say, I, I have the utmost respect for the planning board.
I do, too.
I bet they work hard, and, and, but sometimes they have to agree to disagree.
Right. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Well, one comment, I was on that board for 18 years, you know I was. And I do have the utmost respect for these guys and gals that are there. Absolutely, I know what you go through to get that, these things done. And my, my, my recommendation here, my note motion is by no means a detriment to them whatsoever.
I, I would just say, you know, that Mr. Gallimore talked about maybe doing some fine tuning, you know, by the county, and I agree, I agree with that. But that takes time, and any decision we make up until that point in time, we all know will be grandfathered in. So I just feel like I have to be cognizant of that.
Further comments? Everybody ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Motion passes 4 to 1. Thank all of you for your participation tonight, here tonight, and those getting, getting us to this point on both sides of this issue, we thank you for that. We have another motion on Tawana Williams. I will say that her first meeting will be this Wednesday, pardon?
We need to adjourn. We need to adjourn this meeting, never mind the meeting.
Oh.
I'm, I move to adjourn the zoning appeal meeting.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right. Our second meeting is for general business. One is to ratify the appointment of Tawana Williams to the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council Workforce Development Board. Her first board meeting will be this Wednesday, I think 10 o'clock Wednesday morning. And she was at our retreat this weekend, looking forward to it. We're, we're doing it this way because the next board meeting is not till January of '24, so they meet quarterly, so I have...